Good evening. It's Thursday, October 1st, 2015, and this is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. There's a revised agenda, which is before the board members. So let me read the opening statement, and then we'll turn to that. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by permanently posting the 2015 Agenda Resolution of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copying has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 9th day of December 2014. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 9, 2014 addition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Burge?
Ms. Capizole?
Here.
Ms. Crumiller?
Here.
Mayor Lempert?
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Spruill?
Mrs. Trotman?
Here.
Mrs. Olman?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Announcements. I believe we have a date for a subdivision committee meeting. Do you want to have -- do you have that?
Yes, it's October 19 at 9:30 a.m.
It's October?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, that's a Monday, right?
Yes, at 9:30 a.m.
At 9:30, for those of you who are on the subdivision committee and anyone else who'd like to come and see what happens at the subdivision committee. Any other announcements? All right.
Oh, wait, no, Wanda, do you want to tell people that they're on TV, just since it's a new thing?
We told them last week, but we hope we're on TV this week, too. Our meetings are being televised from now on, and so you can ask all your near and dear friends and loved ones to watch you at home rather than coming to see us here. Any other announcements? And we do hope that it will lend, I wouldn't say an open meeting aspect, but it will make people better informed about what goes on at the planning board and how we make our decisions and who comes here to listen. So from that, let's move on to the hearings. And Jerry, I'm going to ask Mr. Mueller to explain about the Avalon Bay hearing.
First, I want to have Eileen turn the record that notice is proper.
Yes.
Okay. There's a wrinkle with Avalon Bay, not the first one we've had, maybe not the last. The notice was sent down by Avalon Bay. The notice is proper, and the board has jurisdiction. The service list they used, which was based upon a list of property owners within 200 feet of the site, and it was provided by the municipality, missed three different homes. That doesn't invalidate the notice because, under the municipal use law, the applicant can rely upon that service list. Staff found out about that when one of the three called and said, "I didn't get notice." I had discussions with the attorney, and we left it where we would carry it. Actually, it would be re-noticed for the 15th of October. And you got a revised agenda. It was not the agenda that was posted on the website. The official agenda just showed it as a regular hearing on Avalon Bay, but the board members and staff received a revised agenda that said that it would be re-noticed for the 15th. We then got word after Eileen sent a letter requesting an extension, our clock, that is the time by which we must act, ends on October 9, and she requested an extension that went beyond October 15. We needed that because if we want to act tonight, the developer could claim that it was entitled to an automatic approval. Because under the municipal use law, you have certain periods of time within which to act. If you don't do it within that time, the developer, at least in theory, is entitled to automatic approval, although the courts don't look really terribly kindly on those kind of cases, especially when the municipality has a good reason for not having acted within the proper time limit. In any event, but after Eileen sent the letter, that precipitated a phone call to me from the attorney saying, "They want to get paid all their costs for re-noticing." So we went back and forth on that. Where we eventually left it was my suggestion that we take jurisdiction tonight, that we carry it to the 15th of October, and that they give us an extension beyond the 15th, and that during this two-week window, Avalon Bay provides certified mail notice with the three people who didn't get it originally. We've done that before. It's perfectly lawful. It made good sense. However, Avalon Bay was still not willing to give us an extension beyond tonight. I explained to the attorney, then we're going to have to hear it tonight because otherwise we'd have the vulnerability of an automatic approval. And they said, "We're not showing up." I said, "That only leaves us one alternative, which is to deny the application for want of prosecution," which is what I'm recommending. Now, I would recommend we do that without prejudice and with a stipulation that they can reinstate the notice without additional application cost or submissions because it's really ready to go. They can reinstate the application without additional application fees or submissions because it's ready to go. So that's where we are, and that's my recommendation.
Okay. There any questions? Would someone like to make a motion using the formula that Mr. Mueller has outlined?
Can I just -- it's -- can you restate the basic facts again? I mean, so the notice, I mean, you said the notice in the beginning, did you mean the notice for this meeting for where the Open Public Meetings Act was correct?
No. The Avalon Bay notice that it published in the paper and served on everybody within 200 feet except for the three people, three households that were not on the list, that notice is proper, and the board does have jurisdiction.
But if three people didn't get noticed, how can it be possibly--
Because under the municipal use law, the only obligation of the applicant is to serve by certified mail or personal delivery everybody that's on the list of property owners within 200 feet that's provided by the municipality. If the municipality makes a mistake, that doesn't void the notice. The applicant can rely on that list, and if there are mistakes, I don't know what the remedy, frankly, for the property owner is because they might miss an important hearing, but the applicant is still entitled to go forward. And we really have to take jurisdiction because the notice is proper.
I mean, doesn't that -- doesn't it not make sense to anyone else? Am I the only one that says it makes sense?
The problem--
Because it seems like the property owner, I mean, in theory, you know, the property owners who didn't get noticed, couldn't they sue?
Possibly. I don't think they could get anywhere. The difficulty is this. It's a no-win situation. So municipality X gives the list to the applicant. The applicant diligently serves everybody. It turns out that there's a couple of people missing on the list. The applicant shows up at the hearing to find this out. He has his or her array of experts and wants to go forward. Well, if you don't let him go forward and say the notice is improper, then the applicant is being impacted. On the other hand, if you let him go forward, those property owners that haven't been served may be impacted. Now, they might know about it anyway, but they might not. So the legislative judgment was, we should let the applicant go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Olman?
Well, in view of the absence of an applicant, I would recommend that we turn down this application.
With the qualifications that I gave before?
With all the qualifications you just gave, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
Julie Capizole, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Capizole. Are there any further questions or discussion? Anyone? Do you want to call the roll on that one?
Ms. Capizole?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reed? Yes.
Ms. Crumiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I ask another question? Who's responsible for how big these are? Because this is way too small, and I couldn't tell. Is that the applicant, or is that us?
That's us. You have the 11 by 17, which has been the board's practice in terms of you don't have the full size. If you'd like to set a full size, we can get you one.
I would appreciate that, thanks.
That's what's submitted and what staff reviews because we scale it off. Typically, we give the board the 11 by 17 so that you can look at it without bumping into each other up on the deck.
Yeah, usually it's okay, but in this case, I just couldn't even see the numbers on it. I don't know if other people want the bigger one, too.
Ms. Olman?
Yeah, and actually, I genuinely anticipated the comment that I was going to make about the application from the DNR Greenway, which, had I not been intimately familiar with the property, I would have no way of figuring out this plan. There's no indication of where the streets are, except for a north-south indication. There's nothing. And I simply feel that to ask the board -- now, I have to grant you, my eyes are not terrific, but to grant the -- to give the board something that doesn't clarify the point of the application, exclude all the other stuff that doesn't apply to the application, is really not doing a service either to the application or to us. And I'm relying on you, sorry, to ask the applicants, please, please, to give us something that is much clearer than both of these plans, which really are hard to understand, even for somebody--
The Avalon plans, we can get you a little larger set if you want. In this case, we were working with the Greenway to help them keep their costs down. But duly noted and--
Okay, and I think with those comments that we should move to the DNR Greenway application. So I'm going to ask Mr. Solo, I hope you have a larger plan for the easel to go over what we're hearing in this application.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give you the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record.
Lee Solo, the planning director for Princeton. Thank you and good evening. I'd like to briefly summarize the application. As the chair indicated, this is a minor site plan and conditional use for the DNR Greenway. Let me give you a little background before we talk about the plan. Back in 2000, the former Princeton Township and the DNR Greenway partnered to purchase what was then the R.W. Johnson Estate. The estate was about 60 acres, and it was located on Rosedale Road. That property was subdivided to create a 54-plus-or-minus-acre park, known as Greenway Meadows now. There's some ball fields currently on that and a parking lot. And the DNR Greenway retained the remaining property consisting of a large barn and some residential structures. Over the years, those residential structures have been put to a variety of uses, but they have remained -- for a short period, they were sold to the Hun School. The DNR Greenway now owns them. The Greenway converted the existing barn, the main barn on the building, into their headquarters, and then the residents were used for residential purposes. Let me talk to the plan that you have in miniature. We do have a blow-up. At the top of the plan, and not shown, is where Rosedale Road would be. The complex is served by a private road labeled Preservation Place, which intersects with Rosedale Road. Johnson Park School would be up here, just off of the plan as well. This is sheet -- where's the number? It's labeled -- I'm using a lighting plan sheet, and we'll label it as PB1. What I've done is, again, Rosedale Road, Preservation Place, north is to the top. I've colored in brown 1, 2, 3 up at the top of the half -- or three residential structures. The headquarters of the DNR Greenway, also shown in brown, is this long rectangle. There's a large parking lot, and then there's a garage, also colored in brown, in terms of the existing structures. The park surrounds the DNR Greenway to the west, to the south, and to the east as well. Tonight, the DNR Greenway seeks what we call an amended site plan and conditional use approval to utilize the residential structure as offices for a nonprofit institution that provides community activities related to the environmental education, land preservation, or educational purposes. The uses that's being proposed, which is for the breast cancer awareness, is a permitted use under this The YWCA's Breast Cancer Resource Center is proposing to occupy the existing structure located on Lot 103, which is here, also known as Two Preservation Place. This building, so it's the center one, contains approximately 2,400 square feet in total. The application that's been submitted indicates there will be two to three employees at any one time and one to two visitors at a time at most at the site. The application also indicates that the existing onsite parking and conference facilities will be shared. If you've been to the Greenway headquarters, you know their upper floor has a number of meeting rooms and conference rooms, and I'm assuming they will share the paved parking lot that's in the middle as well. Currently, Lot 1 Plan 03 has two gravel parking spaces, and they're going to add a third gravel parking space. The third space they're adding is shown here in orange, so they'll have three immediately available on the site. In addition, they're proposing six new grass paver parking spaces, which are shown in green here across from their building on the south side of Preservation Place. They are also proposing a second phase of four additional spots, shown in a slightly darker green along here. Preservation Place actually loops around the buildings in this way, and there are grass pavers currently in this area, and they will just enlarge that slightly to provide a total of 10 additional spaces. No exterior improvements are proposed to the structure. The only improvements are related to the parking that we've talked about. As I indicated, the zoning officer has advised that the use is proposed, and all standards of the conditional use have been complied with. By way of comments, we've asked that they verify that these additional spaces will be some sort of grass paver and not be paved. We also noted that in terms of Phase 2, there's a dumpster, which is not shown in this general location here of the second-phase parking area, that may conflict with those spaces, and they should take a closer look at that. Other than that, that's a summary of the application. We're not allowed a planning, zoning, or engineering issues. We support the idea of adding to the grass park pavers. The application indicates they'll share the parking when they need to. That's available, and that is paved -- well, it's not paved. It's a brick paver in the center of the court. The applicant is here. He can maybe answer if you have specific questions. I don't know if the board has any questions for myself or Mr. Bridger, who's here.
Lee, is there signage proposed for this?
Nothing was on the plan. I'm sure the applicant can speak to that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Crum?
Lee, you said there are two existing gravel parking spaces on the property with this residence. I couldn't see them on the plan. Can you indicate where they are?
They're in this general area near where the third space is being added. It's a gravel driveway, basically.
So it's not shown on the plan, but it's in the same area?
And again, we were trying to work with the DNR Greenway and get them in front of the board as quickly as they can. Evidently, the Breast Cancer Society is ready to move in.
Any other questions? All right, let's hear from the applicant.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Christopher Degrezia from the law firm of Drinker, Biddle, and Reeth, here on behalf of DNR Greenway Land Trust. Good evening.
Chris?
Oh.
The board has a practice of--
Yes. To the extent I provide any testimony this evening, I swear firm to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
You would tell the truth anyway.
I was telling the truth at the beginning as well. Thank you. For those of you not familiar, DNR Greenway is a nonprofit organization that's focused on the preservation of land, all different sorts, from land, farmland, agricultural land, scenic vistas, everything imaginable under the sun. And that's about half of their program. The other half is stewardship and education, so they don't only preserve land, but they protect it. They rebuild habitats. They have forest management plans. They have native seed programs, a lot of different educational components. In the -- just to give you an idea of some of their statistics, they were founded in 1989, and in that time, they preserved over 280 properties. And when you take a look at the acres, you're looking at 19,252 acres here in New Jersey preserved through efforts of DNR Greenway. I was talking about stewardship. They actually manage, out of those 19,000 acres, they manage 6,158. Well, actually, I just closed a deal yesterday with DNR Greenway. They preserved another 10 acres, so 10 more was just added to all those numbers as of yesterday. So this is -- the application this evening is dealing with DNR Greenway's preservation campus, and it was described very thoroughly by Lee, who usually says everything I'm going to say, so I won't go over it again. But basically, this is the hub for DNR Greenway. You have the Johnson Educational Center, which he pointed out, and then you have the three residential buildings. DNR Greenway had an opportunity where the residents of this building right here, shown on the plan in the center, moved out, and it gave them a great opportunity to bring in a non-for-profit organization that's focused on community well-being and education. Everyone's really excited about the YWCA. To have them in here, there is a real natural connection between health and wellness and preservation and environment, whether you're talking about building trails, preserving land, building trails, or exercising on them, or preserving farmland and diets and nutrition. There's this synergy that will come together with these two groups that I think we're going to see a lot of amazing things. They're very excited about it. They're talking about trail programs, how to put together new programs that will help each other's organizations. So this is a very exciting project for us. To actually bring it all together, there's only a couple of changes we need to the plans, and that's why we're here. We're here for the conditional use approval, and we're also here for some slight modifications. So as I indicated, we're talking about the center residence as shown on the plan that Lee put up. And the first thing that we would like to do is, you really can't see it on this plan, but there is a driveway that comes. You have Rosedale Road. You have Preservation Place that comes in, and then there's a little driveway to the house. And like all single-family houses, it's about the -- not all, but some. It's the width of two cars. What we would like to do is just enlarge slightly the gravel area so that three cars would park across there. On the opposite side, I guess to the south of Preservation Place, we have grass pavers, so there's existing three parking spaces. I have a picture from Google Maps. If you look down, it just looks like grass area, but when you get up close, there's concrete with grass growing through it, so it's permeable. Water drains through, but you could still park cars there. So we would like to add, I think there's three existing, it's not really measured out because it's not striped. There's about three spaces. We would like to enlarge it to include six more. Same thing on this side, where our prior plan included, let's see, it was eight spaces were prior -- were approved and four additional, but we're not looking at building these anytime soon, but we would like to get the approvals at this place -- at this time, just in case we will need them later on. And that's really it. We could -- I have here with me Judith Hutton, who is the CEO of the YWCA in Princeton. She could talk a little bit more about the programming, if you're interested, or if you have any questions, we can go from there.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Crum? Did you have questions?
Yeah, I have just a couple. One is the new parking, new Phase 1 parking, seems to obstruct what's labeled as a stone drive on the property. Is that stone drive no longer there, or are they planning to vacate the whole thing, or what's the intention for that?
I don't think we're gonna use it. It runs directly in front of the carriage house, and that was existing.
Let's have Lori MD sworn in so she can answer this. Lori, you can use the microphone up here. You're going to raise your right hand, state your name for the record.
Lori MD.
Did you swear or affirm the testimony about to give you the truth?
Yes.
And could you state your full name for the record and spell her last name?
Lori EMD.
Thank you.
Can you answer the question?
Yeah.
Thanks.
When we purchased the property of the old Johnson Estate, had a gravel driveway that ran in front of the carriage house, which is a small structure there that is across the parking lot from our main entrance. It is a used property used for agriculture, and it is no longer used. It is --
There's a little residue of gravel, if you look very closely, but we are not using that any longer. We have adequate parking for our needs, except for this new opportunity we have.
Okay. And then, I guess the other question is, clearly, the 10 new parking spaces aren't associated with this new use in any way. It has to do with the existing programs, the requirement for these additional parking spaces?
Well, we would like to afford the BCRC six parking spaces for their staff and clientele that is adjacent to Preservation Place. So we need to add, in order to do that, we need to recoup ours, so we want to add those spaces, those four additional spaces, which are the ones that we've marked here in the drawing. So one adjacent to the two existing gravel ones by their front door, essentially, and then across Preservation Place, we would add onto the existing strip--
Yeah, it's actually six, six across.
There are six on the other side of Preservation Place and one on the property, so there's a total of seven in Phase 1 that are being added for a total--
I'd have to go to the map and count, but I take your word for it.
Yeah, and then that'll be added to the two that are already on the site, so that's nine spaces that are being provided for this new user, unless you have an intention to use some of them for the existing--
That is correct. There's seven proposed, one gravel, and the ones across will be all pavers, grass pavers.
Okay. And they are, they're not all for the breast cancer--
They are for the YWCA program. Now, we understand that on a daily basis, there's really not necessarily need for that many, that, however, there are some support groups that may have a couple more people. Typically, you'll have two to three employees on a daily basis with one or two visitors. But there are occasions where they may have a support group or some other function, and this was a desired number, and we had the ability to provide it in the space. And we would like to make their operation as smooth as possible and give them convenient access for their visitors.
Other questions? Anyone? Did you want to hear more about the Breast Cancer Institute briefly, since you came prepared to tell us about that? Do you want to just--
I would love to. My new friend, Judy Hutton.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give you the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Judy Hutton, H-U-T-T-O-N. You know, collaboration is the word in Princeton these days, and I think that the Breast Cancer Resource Center and DNR Greenway has been a perfect marriage in terms of what we have seen at our Breast Cancer Resource Center, which is on 59 Paul Robeson Place-- Place, is that there is a real connection between nature and outdoors and healing, and that's what we've seen with our Breast Cancer Resource Center. So we're looking to expand our services. We're keeping our wellness services at the YWCA site, we're keeping an office there, but we're really looking to do more lunch and learns, more counseling, more education at DNR Greenway and working with them. And we're very excited about that marriage. And you actually will see some pink bicycles on the trail as you go by. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, if you have, have further testimony, then I think I'd like to open the meeting to the public. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak about this application? No? Just learning and listening? All right, if hearing no one, let me close the public portion of the meeting. Any further discussion, comments? Anyone? I ask for a motion, maybe?
Um, Milton Trotman, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Trotman, seconded by Ms. Carmiller.
Could I suggest three, here are three, um, conditions. One is a standard condition, we get approval from our Marissa County Planning Board, um, that the applicant confirm that the houses are connected to the public sewer and comply with all approvals required by the PSOC, and that the applicant provide facilities to comply with Marissa County and Princeton recycling requirements.
Okay. And that's agreeable to the proposal of the motion? All right. If there are no further comments or questions, do you want to call the roll in, please?
Sure. Ms. Capizole?
Yes.
Ms. Carmiller?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Trotman?
Yes.
Mrs. Olman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Well, maybe I will go, you know, now that I'm out, I'll just say, what's your schedule, where you, where you need to be, and then I'll-
Ms. Hutton? Ms. Ms. Uh, Ms. Hutton?
I'm in progress.
Is, is Judy Hutton the Director of the Y?
If I can get a parking spot, but, you know, I'll find something.
Oh, just block someone's driveway.
Oh, sure.
I love that.
Yeah, well, yeah, that happens all the time, anyway.
It's a little, yeah.
Are you, are you revised schedule? You'll notice that we are going to have an executive session, so, after room is cleared. Do I need to read this, or is this just?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay.
Are we going to sit up here?
Sorry?
Turn on the light.
I'm trying, trying to read the resolution.
It's right up, it's the O.
Who?
It's the nine, we don't know where it is.
Should we tell him?
Yeah. Do you want to tell?
We don't need to.
Okay, let's just, I have to do this first.